I'd like to call to order this Eagle Court of Honor, I'm sorry. I'd like to call to order the, uh, this meeting, the June meeting for the Atherton City Council. Come out and roll call please. Oh yeah, that's right, sorry, I don't have to take that from you. Let's lead it, Grant is gonna lead us in that.
(Inaudible) United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Carlson?
Here.
Councilmember Doughty?
Yeah.
Councilmember McKethan?
Here.
Mayor Lewis?
Thank you.
Mayor Whitmer?
Here.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes?
Before we start with presentations, I wanted to make a suggestion, and the suggestion would be to actually remove item 14 from the agenda, because of the controversy that's created, and the council agrees to it.
So, do we have council comments on that? Jerry? Okay? Can we move? Okay, I'm okay, we're removing it, so why don't we remove it?
And then I just want to mention that anybody who is here to speak on item 14 can speak on it on your section floor with the public lines.
What is item 14?
So, next we have presentations, okay, so, the first presentation is to our newly minted Eagle Scout, Grant Chambers. I'll be there in a second. So, I, and I put on my, uh, I didn't wear my full outfit, I'm sorry, but, uh, I thought I could, but, I'm gonna change later. Um, we have a proclamation here, uh, and what I'd like to do is, um, in going through and looking at the presentation, we called around and we collected some information on the new Eagle Scout, and then I found that there were a lot of people that had a lot of nice things to say about him, and we've, we've copied some things here in the proclamation that describe all he did, and the contributions he's made to the schools and things like that, and the number of service hours, but, there's, there's more important things that, that we need to recognize and know about Grant, you know? In fact, there was 12 things that people, that sat out and people said about him. So, one was he was very trustworthy, and he was loyal. People said he was very helpful and friendly. He's very courteous when he talks to people. Kind, he's obedient, that's what his parents say. Cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent, okay? He's always prepared, okay? And those are the attributes of a good scout, and they're not just attributes of, of a good scout, but they're attributes of people like J.W. Marriott, people have heard of him. Neil Armstrong, first man on the moon. William Westmoreland, who was the commander of the Joint Chiefs of Staff during the Vietnam Era. Gerald Ford, some people may have heard of him. Steven Spielberg was an Eagle Scout. Michael Moore, I'm not crazy over all his films, but some of you may be, he was an Eagle Scout, hard to believe, but he was, okay? And, uh, and being Catholic, I cannot skip Cardinal William Keeler, who was also an Eagle Scout. Being an Eagle Scout is the, it's a combination of perseverance, gaining insight into all sorts of things, such as, you know, fireman badge, first aid, citizenship, et cetera. Also serving in leadership capacities in the troop, and also doing things within town. So, I'm not gonna read the presentation, because it says just a whole lot of great things, but I wanted to add something and tell you who you were in great company with, and of course you're in great company with myself, also when you were small. So, one day you'll be the mayor of Atherton. And next, we'd like to have Chief come up and administer our newest officer, Chris Pettit, the oath of office.
Thank you, Mayor. Officer Pettit, front desk. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to introduce and welcome our newest police officer to the Atherton Police Department. Chris's family is here tonight, Dad Steve and Mother Dale, and I think you got two brothers, uh, they're both here. Let's see, I wanna make sure I get this right. Stephen, who is a San Mateo PD officer, and your other brother Ryan, got that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Chris was born in Redwood City and raised in San Carlos, graduated from Carmott High School, and attended Woodville College and the College of San Mateo, where he pursued a degree in psychology. Chris put himself through the police academy, graduating April of this year, 2012. Chris's dad is a sergeant with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, and worked, worked, actually worked there in Atherton in his younger days in 1970 as a police officer, which I found pretty interesting. His mom is a neonato nurse at Stanford Hospital, and was previously a 9/11 dispatcher with Redwood City PD, that's, so you gotta, all, everybody here is in, in the police family. Please join me in welcoming Chris to the Atherton Police Department. And now going to administer the oath of office to Chris, so, raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Chris Pettit.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
For purpose of evasion...
For purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully...
And I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Chris has asked his father tonight to pin his badge, which is pretty traditional in the law enforcement family, and joined by his brother from San Jo PD.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, since the presentations are now done, I'd like to open the, uh, part of the meeting up to public comments. Public comments are reserved for items that are currently not on the agenda, and we try and limit those to a reasonable amount of time, only three minutes, there've been a few people, two people who have asked for, who've gotten permission to go a little bit longer, but not much longer, and so, first one is William.
Deputy Counsel. I don't know if anyone realizes, but despite what might go on here tonight or onward, you have a great amount to be proud of in your counsel, that issued a letter of warning, so to speak, to the governor and to our legislators from this area, that was clear and very unequivocal, that he said, "Do not fund a high-speed rail project." They deserve a round of applause. The good news of today, as of about four o'clock this afternoon, that the governor counted heads, and he does not have the votes, to kill the CEQA amendment for the high-speed rail project. The governor was attempting to, quote, "streamline the California Environmental Quality Act" because of the importance of this train, meaning if he could get rid of the train, the biggest project in the state's history, perhaps the biggest in the United States, what value is the Environmental Protection Act at that point? He did not have the votes, it got dropped, it will not be passed, it will not be even introduced into the legislature. The bad news is that he probably does have the votes to get the authorizations for the state to match the federal 3.3 billion dollars with 2.7 billion, is a funny little thing to form up, to build a $6 billion track bed from somewhere near Merced towards Bakersfield, admitting three things: A, they do not have enough money to get all the way from Merced to Bakersfield; B, it is not electrified, therefore it is not high-speed rail; and C, there's no money to purchase rolling stock. So what we have, and what you're going to buy, in all probability, is a no-train-to-know-where. This is your legislature in action in the, what we have now called, the fact-free zone of Sacramento. Finally, last Friday, the administrative law judge ruled that the defendants, meaning the High-Speed Rail Authority, their demur was carried forward, and it said essentially that the Lucata toss and King's County lawsuit, that is actually adjudicated by Mike Brady of, of Menlo Park, was not ripe for adjudication at a regular court, meaning there was no proof that the authority had already begun to spend money outside of the categories that are allowed to be spent. However, and very interestingly, the Judge Jachang said that she assigned a hearing, a next hearing, for this, for oral arguments on this Friday, day after tomorrow, so there will be a intention of us from Atherton, Menlo Park, et cetera, going up with Mike Brady, the lawyer, to support him. We've had several meetings on articulating why the authority has actually spent money. They've already spent 1.5 million dollars preparing not just RFPs, the Request for Proposals, for the first section, and they have promised, you'll love this, they have promised to spend up to $4 million, I'm gonna repeat that, $4 million, to the five or three, it's hard to discern how many companies are going to build it, so it's kind of a risk-free bid. The government will pay you to go out and produce a bid which may or may not have any relevance. This is the kind of shenanigans that go on in Sacramento. Next time that you ask a contractor to make a bid on repairing your kitchen, just promise them $2 million each. That's about it, good night, and hope all is well in Lake Worth.
All right, we had, uh, one, uh, yeah, sure, go ahead. William, please ask you some questions? William, first of all, again, I'd just like to thank you for all your help. I noticed today that they're also increasing the advertising, if you looked at the Chronicle today, you would see that the mayors of San Francisco, San Jose, Los Angeles, I forget all the others, are now saying, "We are totally in support of this project." So, I don't know what they paid to get them to say that, but, bottom line is, you know, they're, they're now really into fighting with us.
Oh, yes.
And, uh, I'm sure that we knew that already, but it was interesting to see that they're ramping up the advertising.
A moment, Your Honor. Over the last month, the news has been almost completely negative about the train. In fact, the San Jose Mercury News had an article by Mike Rosenberg that called it a "delusional fantasy," the editors didn't strike out that phrase. The only publication in the state that continues, the continues, the publication that continues to support the train is the San Francisco Chronicle. No publication continues to support it. You probably paid for the advertising of the mayors, but you have to remember that we're in a one-party state, one-party state, all right? That's it. Anybody remember the one-party state that fell after the wall? Okay.
You, William. Okay, uh, then we have one other candidate, or person that was going to speak for longer than, uh, than, uh, than three minutes, and I've got some issues also.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, good evening. Uh, I'm Smith McKethan, I live at Maple Leaf Way in Atherton. I'm speaking for someone tonight who's not an Atherton resident, um, he's not a voter, he is not alive, but he has been drawn into the mud by anonymous landowners, who I suspect are Atherton residents, in a clear attempt to influence activities in our town. And I'm speaking of my late father-in-law, Alex Danchuk. I knew Al, uh, he was no pushover as a father, or certainly as a father-in-law. He was a son of two immigrants from Belarus, he grew up in a tough neighborhood in Brooklyn, in a tough time, the Depression. He left high school when he was 16 years old to help support his family, his parents, and his siblings. In World War II, he joined the Navy, he became an aviation machinist mate, and he earned his wings to perform those duties on the B-24 bombers, doing patrols in the Pacific. He was in the Western Pacific on VJ Day. Most of his working life, Al was a trainman with the Long Island Railroad, but he and his wife Mary held down many other jobs to support their family, and they set high expectations. They never, she went to high school, he dropped out, they never went to college. They made sure that all of the three children graduated from first-grade colleges, two of those children went on to graduate from law school. Now, as a young man, Al was an amateur boxer, and well into his 80s, he had the strongest handshake of anybody in the room. Like many self-taught people, he was a lifelong reader and could hold his own view on most any topic, and he wasn't shy about expressing his views, not to his family, not to me, not to his fellow citizens, but he had the character to make sure that people knew that his opinions were his. Why do I say this about Al Danchuk? Because our local political life has reached a new level. We now have an anonymous webmaster weaving not only untruths about my wife, but going to the depths of printing slurs about her late father. This is what this webmaster posts. "McKeethan's father," and I quote, "became rather unhinged in his later life, had several psychotic and/or paranoid episodes that some remember," close quote. Now, after Al turned 90, has helped to decline to the point that he was physically unable to travel to weddings and other family celebrations. We came to him. The euphemism for that statement was, "He was family." He did have days when he was forgetful, but unhinged, psychotic, paranoid? What an insult level that a deceased, he was not any of those at the end of his life. But what if he were? What would the medical condition of a deceased parent have anything to do with the civic life of this town? I want to know how low are those who criticize my wife willing to crawl? How spiteful and how unprincipled can they be? A slur aimed at a late parent? Innuendo targeting our children on the web? Now, somebody spent a lot of time and effort creating this collection of insults and slander. He or she is acting, in my view, with the secret obsessiveness of a stalker. If there is sickness in our town, the blogger only needs to look in the mirror. Now, will Kathy be intimidated? She may be pained by these attacks, she may be saddened that those who disagree with her have left the issue far behind and are focusing their energy on character assassination and family slander, but intimidated she will not be. She took an oath to serve the people of our town, and she will continue to honor that pledge until she steps down from that rostrum. However, I believe that the individuals who authored this blog and who provided support, I, you know, may emphasize, and those people who provide support to that author, are attacking not only Kathy, but they have in mind the rest of this council and anybody else who wishes to serve the citizens of this town. They're letting you know that you may be in for quite a ride if you don't surrender to their agenda, or like Chamberlain at Munich, don't seek to make peace with their threats. Now, Al Danchuk would not have been intimidated by them, he was a straightforward working guy. He didn't spread rumors, he didn't attack people by stealth, he was no coward. If Al were here tonight, he'd just say, "Come out of the shadows, show me your face, put up your fist, and give me your best shot."
Thank you very much, Smith. Any other public comments? Yes?
My name is Bob Broser, and I live at 23 Willburn Avenue in Atherton, and my topic is tennis courts in Holbrook Palmer Park. My wife and I moved here 18 months ago after spending 12 years in Santa Rosa, and previously 25 years in Los Angeles Hills, and I love playing tennis in Holbrook Palmer Park. As we know, Holbrook Palmer Park is unique, beautiful park. I had the pleasure of visiting it about 15 years ago, and I want to say that the town has done a really good job of not only keeping the park in shape, but improving it, and it's a delight to go there. It's a place for walking, running, little league, baseballs, soccer, lacrosse, to name a few, and with those sports, tennis is a great fit. Tennis is a sport where you can keep in shape, get exercise, and you can play it your entire life, unlike many other team sports that are much more difficult to keep, keep going. I hope we can keep Holbrook Palmer Park in the same and similar ambiance so that future generations can enjoy it as much as I do. I take my five-year-old granddaughter there, and she loves going to that park, not only for the children's area, but for the whole park, it's a, it's a fun place to go. I think the sports give the park a real life and a lot of excitement going on. Uh, the issue is really the tennis courts. Uh, they need to be resurfaced, okay? They need some work, and, um, with $8,000 of income... Three minutes, wait. Oh, with $8,000 of income and $6,050 of expenses, it leaves just a little bit of money to do other kinds of repair on the park. However, I think it can be accomplished. Al, Marva, and myself will lead a, a drive to get private donations so that we can get this park, looking, this tennis court, looking the way they should look for the talent of Atherton, and the money that we can break, that we raise, will be added to any money that's in the budget for the tennis courts, and we can get these courts back to the state where they need to be. Some of my friends say, "Why don't you get a key for Menlo Park and play on their fabulous courts, 'cause they're in good shape?" And I said, "I live in Menlo Park, I didn't move to Menlo Park, and they don't have tennis courts in Holbrook Palmer Park." So, I think we should have a tennis facility that we should be proud of, and I think we can do it, I think we can get it done, and, um, we will do it. And I hope that you can move ahead with any budget that we can for the park, we can add to that. Did I mention that I love playing tennis in Holbrook Palmer Park?
Go ahead, make your comment.
So, um, thank you for your, um, your statement. In the city manager's report, that maybe you all haven't read, but it's on page 10 and 10, it does talk about that the facilities, Steve Tyler and the Public Works Department have contacted five tennis court resurfacing, resurfacing companies to visit the tennis courts and, you know, looking at the need for removing the trip hazards, removing the hazards and prepping the surfaces, reviewing priorities, and they are looking at funding sources to provide for the resurfacing, and my question was going to be to the Public Works Department, does that, is that the $15,000 cost that we talked about last month that is essentially in the CIP budget?
Why don't we go over, go over in the budget?
So, I think that's timely to talk about that.
Good, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, sure.
Hi, I'm Alan Marv, I'm the tennis director and also a member of the foundation board for the park. I want you to know we have a fabulous community, I want to thank you all for coming. We are in the middle of a catch 22, we've only sold 34 keys. Part of the deal is, in the last 11 years, people have bought keys and haven't seen much change. What's funny that you don't know is all those people who don't buy keys are still playing there. One person buys a key, brings all their friends who used to have keys. I think if we were to get two courts resurfaced, I don't think we'd have any problem raising the rest of the money to get everybody back online to play here. It's a great park, nothing is more exciting than to see a grandfather playing with a child after, you know, I just got on the board in 1981, and we're now coaching third generation, and that is great to see grandchild, father, kids, and everyone out there playing tennis. It is a sport for a lifetime, and hopefully that'll happen, because I think we can take care of the rest. Thanks.
Feel free to get up if you're on your way.
Tripping over each other. Chad Van Zandt, I live at 20 Lane Place here in Atherton, and I'm on board with these guys. Uh, I want to talk a little bit about my family. My wife, uh, she grew up here in Atherton, she actually had her, I believe she told me, her first grade graduation dance at Holbrook Palmer, and I'm not gonna mention how long ago that was, I don't really want to sleep on the couch, but, uh, my three daughters are here, and between all of us, we play tennis, we've got AYSO Soccer, uh, we have done, uh, second grade birth, we had, I don't know how many, 40 or 50 kids from a second grade birthday party out at Holbrook Palmer just a few weeks ago. I am on this, I'm in the park probably at least three days a week, um, my kids, my wife, a couple of days a week there. This is a very core thing in our family, we're, as a matter of fact, we moved in, our lot backs up to Watkins, I installed a gate in the back fence so we could skip, uh, middle field, I don't like the kids going on middle field, so we hopped out on Watkins and walked down, it's, it's that close. The kids love it, I told them that there were rumors about getting rid of the tennis court, and my five-year-old almost cried over it, so, um, it is an important deal. We are looking at these courts as, in my opinion, the courts are kind of like the heartbeat of the park itself. Alan's been around forever, he knows everybody, people walk by, he calls them by name, they're walking their dog or their grandkid, so, um, you know, I, I wholeheartedly believe, I don't play on those courts because they're the best courts around, I've been invited to play at a number of others that are in far better shape, but that park is a big deal, and I think we all want to take care of it, so, that's, that's about it.
My name's Bella Hayes-Broth, I live at 551 Mary Ann Lane, I've been in Atherton dozens of times since 1981. I have three children, I'm not a grandmother yet, but my oldest son got married last month, so it could happen at any time. We love playing tennis, we go to the park pretty much every day, sometimes twice a day, we live within walking distance, our border collie is absolutely crazy about walking and we play tennis there. I learned to play tennis from Alan. I was definitely a whole-fledged adult when I learned to play tennis, and it was a revelation to me that as a whole-fledged adult, I can take up a sport, and I'm improving, and I can, I improve every week that I have my lesson with Alan. He is a fabulous asset to this community. I didn't know about Alan when my kids were little. Was I too busy, was I working too much? I don't know. But I'm pretty sure that if I had known about Alan then, one of my kids would be on tour now. Recently, we've started playing with our young adult children. Tennis is not their sport, they play other sports. So they have youth, they have speed, they have beauty. But we can still beat them at tennis, and that'll probably be true for another year or two. And I hope we can keep playing in the park, because that's where we play with our family. I belong to the Pacific Athletic Club, I play there all the time, believe me, they have great courts. But I'd rather play in Holbrook Palmer Park with my kids. So I hope we keep the park, I hope we keep the courts, I hope we improve the courts. And I hope my kids have grandkids for me soon, so that I can play with them too. Thank you.
John Rogero, tennis doctor.
John, are you a tennis player as well?
I was just gonna, you just took my joke. Sorry. I don't play tennis. But I do belong to several organizations in Atherton. And three, to be exact. And I was reading the Town of Atherton internal roster of town committees and commissions, and while I was reading it lately, I see publicity in the papers and editorials and so on regarding a group called Athertonians. I consider myself an Athertonian, I've lived here 33 years. And I look at the community groups here, there's eight of them. There's the Atherton Civic Interest League, the Atherton Dames, Holbrook Palmer Park Foundation, Lindenwood Homeowners, Lloydton Park Homeowners, Victoria Manor Homeowners, Selby Stockbridge Neighborhood Association, called Calain, a group, Calain Homeowners. I see no Athertonians. Now, this is not new, this has been around for a long time. So I try to find out, I can't find out, everyone who gives you a contact, and in fact, everyone, and there's a lot of people here, I see the past president of the Lloydton Park Home, Lindenwood Homeowners Association here, people of the Atherton Civic Interest, and so on. And no one is able to find this aloof place to sign up. I might want to sign up, I belong to, let's say, three of them. The Park Foundation gives out a list, 38 pages, 20 people to a page, who belongs to their group, Athertonians. But this Athertonian, I see there's an issue between the town and this group for the way the name is used. And it'd be very simple if they published their records, as the rest of these people do, and you could tell who belongs. Maybe they're Menlo Parkians, or Rebus Cityans, or Palatians, we don't know. But I don't think it's a way to run a railroad, actually. And I think that if, I'd like to find out how people join it. I say I belong to three already, and they supposedly give out blogs or whatever, which I don't follow. But I've seen the editorials and so the paper mentioning them. And I think it's sort of a clandestine outfit. In fact, this is the way the Ku Klux Klan started years ago. But I'd certainly like to see the roster of these people, or how to join, or application. A 30-year resident, I'd certainly like to do it.
Thank you, I'm sure people here can help. John, you have to have a computer to get on there. We can help you out with that.
Right. Okay, sorry. Hi, my name is Kate Kennedy, I am a tennis player. I live in Menlo Park, but for the past several years, I've bought a key to the Holbrook Palmer courts. I started buying a key there because it was such a beautiful setting to play tennis. I've always taken my kids to Holbrook Palmer Park, since we consider it our neighborhood park. We think it's a beautiful place. And the reason that I continued buying a key at these courts rather than spending considerably less money to play in Menlo Park is for the sense of community. As Chad said, I feel that those courts are the heart and soul of the park. Alan has created an amazing community. So many people play there, as Alan mentioned, probably many more people than are evidenced by the amount of keys sold. And while I recognize that financial considerations are very important, I would submit that there are even higher values than money, and those are community and the nature of the park. And I can't imagine what the park would be like if those courts were torn out. We have a big gaping hole right there in a very prominent area of the park. And I shudder to think what would be done with that big gaping hole ultimately. The park as it is is a wonderful place for families. During the spring, I can stand there on the walking path and watch my son play Little League on one side of me, and watch my daughter play tennis on the other side of me. I play tennis, I'm teaching my kids. And it would just be a crying shame and a real loss if those courts were taken out. And I hope that the Town of Atherton will do everything they can to prevent that. Thank you.
I'd like to say something, because a number of people have raised this rumor about us tearing up the courts. Let us be clear, the council has discussed the size of the area and how to manage these courts in terms of their condition. We have not discussed tearing up the tennis courts. We've discussed how to manage the size, how to manage the condition. And if you go back over our past meetings, that's what we've discussed in view of the size and the fact that we've not been able to put the effort into, as far as the cost, to maintain all of them in a good condition. How can we best manage these courts so that they're playable and can work for you tennis players? That's been the discussion with Steve Tyler, not ripping them up.
Thank you, my name is Rick Thompson. Been a resident along with my family for eight years in Atherton, in 75 Almond Row. And my daughter Riley is here with me tonight. And we find the park to be, you know, a tremendous resource, among the open spaces, the green, the baseball fields. And tennis courts are something that brings our family together. We are proud owners of one of those 31 keys that have been sold this year. And I would like to comment that I think key holders are probably among the most persistent of citizens of Atherton. This year was really a delight, because I could walk up to the counter across the street, request a key, and have one. In years past, it would take me a week to 10 days, every day trying to find somebody to have a key.